I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Without objection, I'd like to make a slight change to the order of the agenda so that we can have the STEM School Choir perform right away and also have the annual food service awards right away, and then we'll go on to open forum after that. So if there are no objections, and I'm hearing no objections, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Miles from the STEM School to introduce the choir. Thank you. Thank you so much. That was amazing. Thank you all. And I'm hoping that she'll come back again next year. It's amazing talent. All right. Next, we're going to go on to the annual food safety awards that we added to the agenda. So I'm going to call forward, I believe it is Support Services Supervisor Jennifer Anderson. And I think we are still kind of doing a changing of the guard here. So so thank you again to the STEM School Choir. We really appreciated everything that they did. And I'm going to call forward Support Services Supervisor Jennifer Anderson for the Food Safety Awards. Thank you so much.
Good evening. We're moving quickly. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jennifer Anderson. I'm the Support Services Manager. And we yearly, at the City Council meeting, recognize our food safety award winners. And so we're doing that tonight. For those that are new on the council, the annual awards are to acknowledge excellence in food safety and service. And it really focuses on the good work that restaurants do rather than sometimes a bad inspection that they might have. The Advisory Board of Health recommended starting a program in Richfield similar to what Bloomington was doing, and our program began in 2006. So the health inspectors, who are staff from Bloomington Environmental Health that we contract with, nominate three to four candidates in two different categories based on food collaborative interviews and the actual food inspection results. The categories for the awards are full-service restaurant. So I believe, and there was a question asked last year, what's the difference between a full-service restaurant and a fast-food pizza carryout cafeteria service? And it has to do with the number of seats available in the restaurant. So the full-service is a category, and then, like I said, fast-food pizza carryout. There's a team of interviewers that visits each site to conduct interviews. They are members of the Richfield-Bloomington Food Collaborative. They are food managers, restaurant owners, health inspectors, public health staff. And that food collaborative meets quarterly throughout the year. So the nominees are judged on how they manage risk factors on a daily basis in the restaurant, how the establishment encourages workers to be motivated about serving safe food, protocol around if employees show up sick to work. All these policies are documented. Information and data is kept. And if they're keeping up with all that, and there's several other criteria, that's all a part of getting to an actual, winning the award. So after these interviews, the results are provided to the Richfield Advisory Board of Health, and they kind of approve the winners. And we call the winners, let them know. We bring them up in front of the council to provide them their award, giving them some exposure. And then we also have those who were nominated but did not win. And I typically hand-deliver those certificates to the managers and owners after this presentation. So this evening, we have two winners. The Food Safety Award for Full-Service Restaurant goes to Broadway Pizza. And if John Sterbeck is here, come on up, yeah. Okay. And the winner for fast-food pizza cafeteria service, everybody's favorite Dairy Queen on E66. Ricky Nielsen and her husband. And then those who were nominated but did not win were Giordano's, Taco Bell, Five Guys Burgers and Fries, and Miko Hana Tasty at 66th and Nicollet. So they'll be getting their certificates of recognition for being nominated. Until next year. Thank you.
Thank you to all the winners and to all of the nominees. We really appreciate all you do for our community. Next, we're going to move on to our open forum. For those of you that are watching online, if you want to participate in the future, you can share your comments in person by voicemail or email, and you may request to participate virtually. For more information on submitting comments, refer to the Council Agenda and Minutes page on richfieldmn.gov/citycouncil. And the way that this works is we'll start out with the in-person comments, and you can tell your name and your address, and you have three minutes to adjust the group. And then after that, we also have a number of comments that were submitted. So right now, I have one person that's signed up for an in-person. You can join us up here. And since I have your card, you don't have to sign in or anything. So you just introduce yourself. So I'm going to call up Mr. Sivile, and you can have the floor.
Thank you. Council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to say what I want to say. So my name's Pooh Sivile. We own the property at 6226 Fifth Avenue South. A few years ago, my in-laws, they bought this house in 2000 where my wife grew up. They've since retired and moved to a senior living facility about a mile away from their house. And we've used that home as a short-term rental since for additional income to support their daily living and medical expenses. Just a little background, I've got 27 years as a commercial banker. I'm also 16 years as a licensed Realtor, own several small businesses, including restaurants, construction, assisted living, as well as short-term rentals. We have short-term rentals here in Richfield, here throughout the metro, up in some rural areas, Scottsdale, things like that. So we have a really good understanding of how it works. What we learned is, number one, you have to respect your neighbors. And number two, you want to make sure it's safe for whoever's visiting the place. So I understand there are some issues, but I think those issues are more isolated as opposed to a general broad issue. For example, if one house is throwing a party, they should be fined because those are not allowed. I know the city of Chanhassen, they have three violations within a year. Then you lose your rental license for that year. So if I get a complaint from my neighbors, I make sure I address that right away. And if I don't, then that's where I get fined. So again, I feel, I believe, those that don't understand short-term rentals may be against it. But I think there was an article I emailed to the city this morning. New York had a one-year ban. After one year banning, limiting to 30 days, they've learned that, number one, it did not improve housing or affordable housing, let alone increased rents, because the people that relied on that short-term income had increased their rents for long term. Hotel prices went up because there were less options available. So therefore, there was less tourists into those cities, meaning that less businesses were coming into the small towns. So I just want to suggest that to council members, voting members, because understanding what I know about short-term rentals, having it, it can work, and there's a way around it, but just by penalizing everyone else that's following the rules, it just doesn't make sense. One last thing I want to add, that I'm also a planning commissioner for the city of Eden Prairie. One thing I learned is that I should not restrict property owners from doing what they want to do with their property, just as long as they're not causing harm to the citizens or endangering one, but that they follow the rules properly. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak that's here in person? All right. If you, yeah, you can come up. And if you didn't fill out a card, there's a sheet up there that you can put your name and address down, and then you can go ahead and introduce yourself and give your address and all that good stuff.
Sorry. I didn't know the, didn't know how it worked. Thank you for having the open forum for the mayor and the council members. My name's Lance Bondas. I own Ministee, which is a property management company, which is headquartered here in Richfield at 7108 Chicago Avenue. We currently employ about 24 staff for maintenance, reservations, housekeepers. Some of them are Richfield residents. I've been dealing with this regulation thing for many years. We formed the Minnesota Vacation Rental Alliance. We have about 200 members. I worked with the city of Minneapolis when they did their regulations. I worked with the city of Mound, St. Paul, and Stillwater. And it's a constant thing, and I see it happening over and over again. And I hope to work with others to work on a statewide thing, to allow the activity. One thing I think a lot of cities, I think, miss is we've had over 10,000 reservations since we've started the business in 2017. Minnesota is a place where it's friends and family coming to visit friends and family. By regulating this activity, you're regulating and not allowing people to come and visit their friends and their families that live in your city. It's expensive, if you're a family of four, or five, or six, to get three hotel rooms, to get four, and to not be able to cook in your rooms. That's what these accommodations allow for. Out of those 10,000 reservations or more, I think we've had four parties. I mean, it's very minimal. There's ways to mitigate that with noise monitoring equipment that we have in our homes. We get selfie IDs with a selfie with every person that comes. The, you know, you can, we pay taxes on a monthly basis to all different counties and cities that have different taxes. Minneapolis has a 3% lodging tax. St. Paul's got a lodging tax. Burnsville has a lodging tax. They're all regulated, and they're done through the Department of Revenue. And large platforms like Airbnb and VRBO, you can actually get them to pay it on host's behalf. We pay it because we're the merchant record on a lot of our properties. We currently manage two homes here in Richfield for owners. I don't know if, I didn't see it in the roll call thing, but I know one of the owners sent in a letter, and, you know, and I'll just read a little bit of what she said just because I think it, it's part of the other reason it really hits home for this is that although we don't live there full-time, we stay several times a year, visiting friends, cheering on the links, and simply enjoying the backyard with family. We bought this home because it's less than a mile away from our parents, and we love, who love the Richfield community. So some of this isn't just a matter of trying to ban a situation that I don't really see as being an issue. I don't know how many complaints there's been, but if it's noise, you have an ordinance for noise. You have an ordinance for garbage. You have an ordinance for parking and just about everything else.
So you're approaching the end of your time limit, so if you could just finish your thought, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I just think, I hope you can keep the visiting dollars here in Richfield, protecting property owners' rights, you know, grandfather, if you're not going to do that, at least grandfather responsible hosts, and require an annual licensing. I hope you'll take the time to step back from your ordinance that you have planned and reconvene and meet with people that can help you draft a better ordinance. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that's here in person that wishes to speak? All right. And if, since you didn't fill out a card, make sure that you sign in and remember to give us your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak once you start.
All right. My name is John Lucas Erickson. I'm a short-term rental operator at 714 Elliott. I'll be brief because most of what I had to say has already been said. Couple points to add. A lot of host calendars book out pretty far in advance. In my case, it's 18 months, and I have quite a bit of reservations throughout next summer and fall. So whatever you guys end up deciding, as far as new changes to the duration, if the effective date could keep that in mind, I think we'd really appreciate that. Other than that, yeah, just about everything that I had has already been said, so I won't waste your time by repeating it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is here in person that wishes to speak? So we have a number of open forum comments that have been sent in. I don't know if it's via email or voicemail, but City Clerk Friedrich, I believe you and City Manager Rodriguez have several of them to share with us. And I'll go ahead and do the timing with those as well, so they get the same three minutes as the people in person.
Wonderful. We did have some comments that we received where the speakers actually spoke in person today, so we won't reiterate those again. Okay. The first one we have is from Tung Thang Lee. "I'd like to thank for the efforts that the city is working on to make Richfield a better place for us, and I totally understand that. However, the STR ban restriction is unnecessary for some reasons. For example, it makes sense to avoid bookings under five days because these segments may be likely to have parties or something to that sort. I myself have a rental property here, and I have no issue with tenants over five days as I restrict all bookings must be over five days. It'd be tough if the restriction bar is 30 days, which makes the business become harder in the long run. Rather than that, I would suggest the city should have a regulation about requiring ID verification before accepting the bookings, which I am currently doing, that for my tenants, to ensure the safety of the house as well as the neighborhood. I hope that it'll be a reasonable decision-making for both sides, and city and business owners. Please kindly hear me out, and let me know if you have any further questions or concerns. Thank you for your time." And the second one for tonight is from Noe Keo Thaakum. "Good evening. Our names are Noe Keo Thaakum and Maurice Mitchell, owners of 7432 Elliott Avenue South, Richfield, Minnesota. We live in Denver, Colorado, for a majority of the year. And while we don't live in Richfield full-time, we stay here several times a year, visiting family, cheering on the links, and enjoying the community we love. Our home is less than a mile from my parents, and short-term renting helps us keep it in the family by covering taxes and maintenance. We take this responsibility seriously. Our professional manager, Minstey, screens every guest, enforces quiet hours, and lives nearby. In the past five years, they have had zero noise complaints because good neighbors matter to them and us. Short-term guests also support local businesses. They eat at local restaurants, shop in town, and bring dollars that would otherwise go to hotels elsewhere. A simple 3% lodging tax, already common in Minnesota, could even help fund city services without raising property taxes. Please don't ban short-term rentals. Instead, set clear, fair rules like licensing, safety inspections, and lodging tax, and allow responsible owners like us to continue. We love this home and this city. Let's find a path forward that works for everyone." Thank you, Noe Keo Thaakum and Maurice Mitchell.
I have one on short-term rentals and one on the pump and munch agenda item. So the first one is, "I would like to voice my concern about restrictions, about restricting short-term rentals. I am not in favor of imposing a minimum of 30 days. This is for legal reasons because of the difference between a guest and a tenant. I grew up in Richfield and purchased my parents' house when they needed to move on. My husband and I enjoy hosting guests in the house and have never had any complaints from the neighbor at this location. Most of our guests do decide to stay 30 days or more, but even for stays longer than 30 days, we prefer to write the lease for a shorter period and renew it as needed. We have only had one bad experience at a different location outside of Richfield, but it taught us the danger of leases longer than 30 days. The renters had a domestic problem which resulted in a fight and screaming that disrupted the neighborhood." the neighbors. With a short-term lease, less than 30-days lease, we could have removed them promptly. However, because they got a longer lease, the state of Minnesota considered them tenants, not short-term guests, and we had to go through a lengthy eviction process to remove them from the premises. This meant that neighbors had to put up with the numerous disruptive disruptions involving police calls for months, and we suffered property damage. We learned that the experience to limit leases to a shorter duration, which can be renewed for good renters, to protect both of us and the neighbors in the event of a problem. We have hosted guests in Richfield for a variety of stays. Some of the most recent have been grandparents coming to spend time near the family. A young man from Duluth who had several weeks of medical tests and needed a home where he could prepare specialized meals, a professor with a week-long teaching assignment, and our current guest, a doctor and nurse who just moved to the area from out of state to start new jobs but needed a place to stay until they could get their permanent home. We are proud to provide a service that is needed in the community after enjoying their stay at our house. Both the doctor and nurse couple and the grandparents are considering purchasing homes in Richfield, so we are happy to be ambassadors for the city. As you consider restricting stays to 30 days or more, please consult with an attorney and provide guidance to landlords on how to avoid the tenant situation for temporary guests if you are forcing longer stays. Thank you for your consideration, Nancy Stoddard." And then I have a comment that was submitted anonymously. "Dear Richfield leaders, thank you for taking action to shut down Pump and Munch alcohol and tobacco sales to minors. It is widely known among the community as being a place where minors can procure alcohol and tobacco products as a minor. I especially want to thank the local police for their, for taking action. These vape products are highly destructive and can have long-term health consequences for our children. To the owner of Pump and Munch, you are preying on our youth. The parents of the surrounding area will continue to endeavor to expose losers like you. I hope the loss of your tobacco license causes you great distress. Further, I hope that Richfield police keep a close eye on you now that you have been outed as a threat to our community." And it's signed an anonymous parent who is still watching you. And that's all I have tonight.
I believe there was also, City Attorney Teigen, you had another document. Is that part of the open forum or?
Mayor and council, we can address that when we get to the public hearing item on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll save that for the public hearing. Thank you. All right, and is that all, are those all of the comments that were submitted that way? Is there anyone else that's here in person that wishes to speak? All right, so what's going to happen is we do have a public hearing later in the agenda that deals with the issue of the tobacco license, so people will have a chance to speak at that point as well. So with that, we're going to close the open forum and move on to approval of the minutes of the City Council Work Session Meeting from April 22, 2025, and the City Council Regular Meeting from April 22, 2025. And I should add thank you to everyone who spoke at open forum and everyone who submitted comments, so I appreciate that. Now, moving on to the minutes.
I move approval of both sets of minutes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've approved both sets of minutes. Next, we'll move on to our presentations, and the first is a proclamation celebrating Jewish American Heritage Month, and I'm going to be joined by School Board Member Ken Liss, who is the liaison to the Human Rights Commission in Richfield. So if you can meet me up at the podium, that would be great. So thank you for joining us, School Board Member Liss, and this is a proclamation of the city of Richfield. Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month celebrates the culture, heritage, and traditions of Jewish Americans and all their achievements and contributions to Richfield, Minnesota, the United States, and the world, and whereas 2025 marks the 45th annual celebration of achievements and contributions by Jewish Americans, starting with the establishment of Jewish American Heritage Week in 1980 and expanded upon in 2026 when President George W. Bush and Congress ordered that the country observe an annual Jewish American Heritage Month each May. And whereas, over 7.5 million Jewish Americans have contributed to the many aspects of American society, including arts, education, sports, law, medicine, and public service, and more, and whereas Jewish Americans have fought honorably, a number earning the Medal of Honor to ensure our freedom by serving in colonial militias in the American Revolution and all-American military conflicts since the establishment of the United States, and whereas, Richfield is home to important Jewish cemeteries, including the Minneapolis Jewish Cemetery founded in 1890, the United Hebrew Brothers Cemetery, Gemelish Hasad Cemetery, and the Benet Emet Cemetery. And whereas, we celebrate the rich heritage of the Jewish American community, we recognize tireless work to strengthen the promise of religious freedom and civil rights by joining together with all faiths to reject ignorance and intolerance, teach empathy and compassion, and root out hatred wherever it exists. And whereas the city of Richfield is proud of the people, community, and businesses of Jewish Americans, we look forward to the continuing success of Jewish Americans in our community. And whereas, the Richfield Human Rights Commission supported a proclamation celebrating Jewish American Heritage Month in its April 1, 2025 meeting. Now, therefore, I, Mary Supple, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the city of Richfield, and call on the people of Richfield to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies, and continue to honor the contributions of Jewish Americans throughout the year. Proclaim this 13th day of May 2025." All right. Thank you very much. And did you want to?
Okay, first, putting on my hat as a school board member. Wasn't it great to see one of our great elementary schools sing today? That was great. I'll have to make sure the rest of the board knows they were here. On behalf of the Jewish community of Richfield, I want to thank you for recognizing Jewish American as Heritage Month. It's a big deal. My family came over to Minnesota from Belarus and Ukraine back in 1913, and while they didn't, you know, they didn't live in Richfield proper, many of my family now live in the cemeteries that we, that are here in Richfield. So it's still an important part of our heritage, and that, you know, the Jewish American community has done a lot for this, for this state and city and all that. So without much ado, thank you very much for recognizing our people.
So next, I would like to invite forward Chief Jay Henthorn of the Richfield Police Department, and I don't know if you want any other officers to join you or how you want to do this. Are they, they're being shy? Is this?
They're shy.
All right. This is a proclamation of the city of Richfield. Whereas the people of this community wish to join the entire nation in recognizing the valor, bravery, and dedication to duty of our law enforcement officers, and whereas President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15 as Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week, and declared that all flags of the United States be flown at half-staff on that date. And whereas, 345 new names will be added to the national monument in 2025. And whereas, this city of Richfield recognizes that our law enforcement officers, who day by day, hour by hour, serve not only as law enforcement agents of this city to protect life and property, but are indeed friend, neighbor, and guardian. Now, therefore, I, Mary Supple, Mayor of the city of Richfield, do hereby proclaim May 11 through the 17, 2025 as National Police Week, and May 15, 2025 as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in the city of Richfield, and call upon every citizen to honor and memorialize those law enforcement officers in this country and city who have lost their lives in the defense of our homes, families, or property, and to join with our law enforcement officers in acknowledging our thanks for their service, valor, and dedication to duty, and our pledge of continued support for their unending war on crime and promotion of safety through enforcement in the year ahead. Proclaim this 13th day of May 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember. First and foremost, I want to thank the community for all the support. I've been here for 35 years, and I think it's the best community in the state of Minnesota. I also want to thank my staff, who go out every day unwavering and provide great service to the community. I also want to, basically, from, go out from the police department, our hearts and prayers to the Minnesota departments that are out in DC this week, having their loved ones etched in the marble as they gave the ultimate sacrifice, and those departments are Burnsville, Officers Elstran and Rugi, Minneapolis, and their police officer, Mitchell, Red Lake Tribal Police Officer Branch. As the incoming president of the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association, I had the opportunity to meet with these families at our annual conference in Rochester in April. Meeting with them and hearing the sacrifices and the hurt, but also the pride in their voices was something that I've never experienced. I was very honored and privileged to present their families with the police cross and the Medal of Honor for the ultimate sacrifice these officers made, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Next, we will move on to the approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Are there any changes? All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we will move on. The agenda has been approved. Our next item of business is the consent calendar, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, Item A, consider approval of an annual request for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Academy of Holy Angels located at 6600 Nicolet Avenue South for their annual Holy Angels Rock the Lawn event, taking place Friday, June 13, 2025. Item B, consider approval to set a public hearing to be held on May 27 to consider the issuance of a new on-sale wine and 3.2% malt liquor license for MC Richfield LLC, doing business as Dragon Pot, located at 966 Street East. Item C, consider, consideration of the approval of the Cannabis and Substance Use Prevention Services Agreement with Bloomington Public Health. Item D, consider the approval of an agreement with the city of Bloomington for the provision of food pools, lodging, therapeutic massage, and body art establishment inspection services for the city of Richfield for 2026. Item E, consider approval of the bid tabulation and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute a contract with New Look Contracting, Inc. for the 70th Street Safe Routes to School project in the amount of $624,672.75, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes up to $175,000 without further city council consideration. Item F, consider adoption of a resolution accepting a safe routes to school infrastructure grant from the Minnesota Department of Transportation for intersection improvements along 64th Street and Russell Avenue in the area of Sheridan Hills Elementary. Item G, consider approval of a maintenance agreement with Nine Mile Creek Watershed District that defines ownership and maintenance responsibilities for certain stormwater infrastructure in and surrounding Adams Hill Pond. Item H, consider approval of an agreement with Laflor Construction LLC to perform construction management services for improvement to Veterans Memorial Park, including the Richfield Public Pool and Ice Arena. And Item I, Richfield Fourth of July Committee Celebration Lines as an Application. And I submit all of these for your approval as part of the consent calendar. Thank you.
I move to approve the consent calendar as?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have approved the consent calendar. Our next order of business is a public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to Council Member Hayford O'Leary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider approval of a resolution authorizing the 90-day suspension of a tobacco license issued to Lyndale Pump and Munch, located at 6300 Lyndale Avenue South, for egregious flavored product and underage sales violations. The recommended suspension dates are May 13, 2025, through August 11, 2025. Along with the suspension of the tobacco license, any additional violations of city code or state law relating to the operation of the business or the sale of tobacco products before February 12, 2028 will result in immediate revocation of the license. From the executive summary, with the implementation of the flavored product prohibition that went into effect January 1, 2024, the city has seen a steady increase in complaints for not only the illegal sale of flavored tobacco products, flavored products, but also sale to underage youth by several licensed tobacco retailers. Complaints have come from multiple sources and have led the city to recommend a more severe penalty. The attached resolution outlines the actions and events involving the Lyndale Pump and Munch over the past 13 months. Staff feel the recommended suspension sends a message that this type of disregard for city policy and the protections put in place to keep youth from the harms of tobacco use will not be tolerated in Richfield. The city will continue to enforce, investigate, and hold accountable all tobacco retailers who violate local and state laws. In just a second, I'm going to have staff add some additional things. We're not going to read the resolution. Of course, it is a public document, but I will just note some of the reasons why staff described this as egregious. There are many tips related on underage sales. They refused regulators' access to do it, where regulators, state regulators could get access, they determined there were violations. In executing a search warrant, they found 2,412 inventory items that were in violation of city code. I believe staff have some additional things to add for context.
Mayor and council, if I might just have some preliminary comments, and staff may have more to add. This is addressed in the council memo, but I wanted to highlight for the council that staff's original recommendation on this was a revocation of the license, and licensee through their legal counsel had reached out to us, wondering if the city would consider a lesser penalty in the form of a suspension rather than revocation. After much discussion with staff and with the licensee and their legal counsel, staff did agree to a recommendation for a lengthy suspension, and I wanted the council to just know, and this, again, is in the council memo, but to highlight that the licensee has agreed, essentially consented, to the 90-day suspension. And so staff felt comfortable with that after much discussion, again, given the circumstances. Believe the resolution kind of speaks for itself with the factual background and the circumstances surrounding this. I know that the licensee is here with their attorney tonight and would like to address the council, but I wanted you just, just to highlight that information for the council tonight.
Does staff have anything else to add before the public hearing? Sounds like, no? Okay. So we'll have a public hearing in just a second. Any resident wishing to participate in the public hearing? You'll proceed to the podium one at a time after I open the public hearing. You'll provide your name and address prior to your comment. Council will hear your comments. If you'd like staff to sign up, please include your name and phone number or email on the sign-in document located at the podium. To ensure everyone has time to speak, each comment will be limited to three minutes in length. As a reminder to residents, the public hearing is a time for council As a reminder to residents, the public hearing is a time for council to listen but not respond. If questions are asked, they may be discussed as part of the council discussion on the issue, or staff will follow up after the meeting. So, the public hearing for the suspension of the license for Pump &amp; Munch is now open. So, you can, and this will be an opportunity for the business owner or any member of the public to come forward and speak to us.
Ms. Mitchell Hadler, I'm an attorney, and I represent the Lyndale Pump &amp; Munch store. It's a gas station and with a convenience store. It's been located and operated at that location under the owner, Mr. Mohammed Salah, who's also here present with me today. He's owned the store for, since 2011, fourteen years. I don't know if many of you have noticed the store. It's right off of 62 and Lyndale, and they have the least expensive gas in the city of Richfield. They also have a convenience store, and many customers have come by and do support the store and its continued existence and continued operation, including the sale of tobacco. So, members of the city council and city attorney, mayor, representatives of the Department of Public Safety, I thank you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of my client, which is Lyndale Pump &amp; Munch and the owner, Mrs. Salah, licensed to authorize to sell tobacco products in the city of Richfield, along with other convenience items for consumers. My client and I and Mr. Salah recognize the serious nature of the violations that have occurred and appreciate the city's willingness to have me approach the city attorney and consider a path forward short of license revocation. And we understand it was a serious event, or several events, and I'm thankful to the city attorney for hearing me out and giving me this opportunity, also with the city council here. First and foremost, my client, the licensee, Mr. Salah, and Lyndale Pump &amp; Munch take full responsible, full and unequivocal responsibility for the violations of the Richfield ordinances that occurred under the license. While day-to-day operations of the store are delegated to managers and employees, the owner understands that ultimate accountability lies with him, and he deeply regrets the violations and impact on the on the community, and are fully committed to restoring trust and ensuring full compliance moving forward. To that end, we respectfully request the council to consider the following commitments and corrective actions that are planned for prompt implementation, and hopefully with the input of any city officials, our doors and our ears and our phones are ready to receive. There will be enhanced owner oversight of the employees at the at the store. The license will now maintain active and direct oversight, more oversight of the business, and regular onsite inspections. There will be employee meetings that will occur to ensure compliance with all city and state regulations regarding the sale of tobacco and related products. There will be employee training and.
So, I was going to say you're over the three minutes, but since you're the applicant, we'll allow you to continue, even though we're past the three minutes. So, go ahead.
I'll try to read faster.
Okay.
The employee training and policy compliance, all managers, employees will undergo some sort of renewed training on the Richfield ordinances, including specific prohibitions on flavored tobacco, underage sales, and proper record-keeping. These trainings will be documented, recurring, and include compliance testing. We'll look for protocols to set these things up. There will be improved ID verification protocols, and that would be to combat underage sales and address prior complaints. There's in process the purchase of an ID machine that will be connected with a database, hopefully that can read these licenses and make sure they're valid and make sure that the owner's proper age or the person presenting the identification is of proper age. They will look at maintaining and share the information if necessary with the log of refused sales and questionable IDs to assist in pattern tracking. We will, the owner will cooperate with the Department of Public Safety, and we welcome any input and support of the Department of Public Safety to propose various collaborative initiatives that would include scheduled check-ins with the city inspectors, compliance audits, and voluntary walkthroughs. There will be clarification regarding cash handling, and I know that might be a subject here that might, there might be some questions on. But there is an ATM machine at the at the at the store, and that has been operating for several months now. And what happens is, as cash comes in, the cash is called, the $20 bills are called from the register, and then various other bills are exchanged at the bank, so the ATM machine can be loaded. And that actually enhances their margins, because every time you, a commercial operation deposits an item in the bank, they get charged a service charge, even if it's just cash or checks, or those are all charged. Every item is charged. So, with using the ATM machine, they can avoid and reduce those charges. There was initial state action involving a lack of receipts that occurred due to a store tenant's inability to access a secured storage area. We've gone through stacks of receipts and looked for all those items that were seized and forfeited. And we're looking, we do have a receipt for everything that's on that list, and we just have to find it. And we will develop a new protocol, ensuring that all employees on duty can verify inventory sources and provide contemporary documentation. Finally, my client is committed to full cooperation with the city departments, including public safety, and implementing any procedural changes that will help align with city codes and work with oversight and implement any other programs to prevent a recurrence of the violations. My client recognized that this is not a good look, what happened, and we do not minimize the seriousness of the findings. And we ask for the opportunity to prove that this licensee is capable of correcting the course, that correcting course, becoming compliant and responsible member of the business community in Richfield. The licensee has agreed with the work of the city attorney to a ninety-day suspension, followed by three years of strict probation, and we believe the structured approach rather than a revocation will result in a safer, more accountable operation without removing a local business from the community. I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council, council, Department of Public Safety for consideration oversight, and respectfully request that you allow the licensee to demonstrate their renewed commitments to compliance and the community and to develop community trust. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the council at this time? All right, seeing nobody, I will move that we close the public hearing.
There was, testimony was submitted earlier, so before we close the public hearing, I believe that needs to be read.
Thank you, Mayor, for that reminder. I just wanted to acknowledge the licensee through their attorneys submitted a document, several pages with signatures in the form of sort of a petition in support of the business as a good neighbor in the city of Richfield. And so, I will submit this to the city clerk for inclusion in the in the record.
Okay. Again, I will move that we close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is closed.
All right. I certainly welcome discussion on the item, but just to follow our procedure, I will move the recommended action first. I rec, I move that we approve a resolution authorizing the ninety-day suspension of a tobacco license issued to Lyndale Pump &amp; Munch, 6300 Lyndale Avenue South. Along with the suspension of the tobacco license, any additional violations of city code or state law relating to the operation of the business or the sale of tobacco products before February 12th, 2028, will result in immediate revocation of the license. So, I move that resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We are now open for discussion. Is there anything that anyone wishes to say?
All right, go ahead.
All right, go ahead. Councilmember Burke?
Thank you. I am glad that the city attorney was able to find some resolution in this matter. I did learn from staff that this is the fourth violation since this owner has had this business. And what especially concerns me is the THC element. It's an allegation at this time, but that is a great concern to me. And I hope that with this renewed opportunity, that you can show that it's appropriate for you to have licensure in this city. Hopefully, over the three years, you can demonstrate that. But as I said, this is the fourth violation since you own that property, and hopefully, it's not going to be a backsliding if it passed habits. Good luck with it.
Councilmember Coleman Woods?
Thank you, Mayor. I am alarmed that the parents reached out to us, that parents in the community are concerned about what's being sold at the at your store. I have two children of my own, and to hear that other cities around us know that your your facility may be allegedly easy to get products from, that concerns me. So, I hope that you can tighten it up and that you can get compliant and that you can continue to do business here.
Any other further discussion? Councilmember Hayford Leary?
Just for context, I wonder if staff could share, it's been a while since their last official violation, but I know with alcohol compliance checks, the city has requirements that the business undergoes certain training. In those previous compliance checks where they failed, I assume underage sales or improper products, did they undergo some sort of required training at that time, or would they have?
At any time, there's a tobacco compliance failure. There is a fine that is implemented based on whether it's the first, second, third, or fourth failure, and there is a suspension. There, unlike liquor, which is required to do an online sales training, there is not tobacco training in place. When we meet with the owners and bring them in, we talk about what an adult license looks like and what an under-21 license looks like. And Minnesota's made that very easy. An under-21 license is a vertical. An adult license is a horizontal. There should be no mistake in selling to anybody under 21. To date, that's that's what's happened when we've met with owners of tobacco stores.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm hearing that you you provide some coaching, but it's less comprehensive than what we require for the alcohol violation?
Yeah, and I will say, a lot of these problems have come forth after the flavored prohibition went into effect January of 2024. Never have we had something like this, a compliance failure. You know, we might have an underage sale. We might have a store that sold, you know, a package of flavored tobacco that was floating in, you know, under the counters that didn't get removed. But this was, this was something on a whole different level. And so, this is, you know, it's kind of a first for the city to consider this, this kind of egregious sale.
Okay, thank you. I will say, I I will vote for this resolution if it feels like that's where the consensus is at. I will also say, I think staff's initial recommendation of revocation was more fitting of the violation. What troubles me more than anything, you know, we have, like, once a year, we assess violations for underage sales of alcohol, and it very often feels like an honest mistake, one that's enforceable, but it's an employee that didn't get adequate training. They get the training. This is very clearly a pattern of behavior. You know you're breaking the law, and you're doing it over and over and over again, and that really troubles me. I support this only because staff feel it's sort of easier and more practical to administer, given that there's agreement between staff and the license holder, but we should be taking away your license. This is way, way beyond the fail. I hope that I am pleasantly surprised that you don't have another violation in the next three years.
Any other comments?
Then I will add that this was extremely troubling when I started reading through all of the documentation and all of the allegations and all of the things that were going on. It's really important to remember that there's reason that we have local and state laws. They're not just suggestions. There are things that are thought through. There was a great deal of discussion of what we could do to keep our community safe and what we thought were the standards in our community. And it seems to me that there are egregious violations of those standards. So, it is the law. They are the rules, and it's not just something you can willy-nilly decide whether or not you're going to do. So, I would hope that you would follow the laws strictly from here on out, and I'm disappointed that we have had this situation. This is not okay, and we do not want this kind of behavior in our city. Is there any other discussion?
All right, the motion before us is for the ninety-day suspension of a tobacco license. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we'll note for the record that it was unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to Item A of proposed ordinance, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Burke.
So, the item for council consideration is to consider a first reading of an ordinance restricting short-term rentals. The executive summary, the city's current policy of regulating short-term rentals, STRs, as rental housing, allows operators to avoid many of the regulations placed on other similar businesses, as outlined in the policy section below. Given this research, staff recommends that STRs of less than one month be allowed only in cases in which the rental license holder lives on site. This recommendation allows continuation of the use, but with closer oversight and more consistency with other policies and requirements. Also, this recommendation is consistent with the strategic plan goal calling for preservation of Richfield as an affordable place to live or housing availability. The recommendation avoids the sizable difficulty that would be involved with permitting, managing, and enforcing STRs as a lodging establishment, which would require substantial operational changes in multiple departments as well as external agencies, such as the Bloomington Environmental Health. For example, STRs provide short-term lodgings like hotels and motels, but operate in non-commercial areas and therefore pay lower taxes, do not require a lodging license or business license, do not require the same accessibility requirements, and typically do not pay the tourism tax collected on an on her base system. STRs operate in residential districts like home occupations and bed and brexits, yet do not require an onsite resident operator or require a conditional use permit. Finally, the economic benefits of STRs to the Richfield community are unclear. STR guests seem less likely than hotel guests to visit local restaurants, given that kitchen facilities are available. And owners tend to live outside of Richfield, so the wealth that either homeownership or business ownership brings is not being captured within our borders, within our boundaries. In light of all this, staff finds that a one-month limitation is the best approach when a license holder is not also living on site. Staff, is there any additional information?
Councilmember Burke, members of the council, thank you. I'll just remind everyone that we are here because this came up after two cycles of the council's policy requests. So, the staff was initially asked to look into this issue as part of the investor ownership concerns in 2023, and then specifically look at short-term rentals as part concerns in 2023, and then specifically look at short-term rentals as part of a policy request in 2024. And our understanding is that the concerns there were related not only to property maintenance, but also to housing stock, housing availability, and those sorts of things. To summarize what councilmember Burke just nicely presented, you know, short-term rentals at this point are getting favorable treatment in terms of taxes, in terms of location of commercial businesses, and in, in terms of some of the regulations that apply to other lodging establishments but don't apply to short-term rentals. And then one of the strategic priorities of the strategic plan is to maintain Richfield as an affordable place to live. The latest estimate that we have, and this is an estimate, although each estimate that we get, the number goes up, right now, the estimate is that we have 100 short-term rentals. Total, we have about 700-ish single-family rentals in the community. And those, those single-family rentals, as we've talked about many times, are a really important part of our rental ecosystem here in Richfield. They provide larger units for families. But also, 100, 100 single-family homes would, that are used for short-term rentals are things that could be used for long-term residents. So given the fact that we've, this has come up twice for us in terms of complaints, and you've asked us to look at it, when we've reviewed the regulations for consistency with other businesses that we regulate in the community, and the affordability, you know, it's a housing affordability crisis and a housing crisis, it's not, as far as I know, a lodging crisis. We are recommending limiting short-term rentals to sites where an owner or a license holder is on site. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Haverly?
Just for context, you said 100 of 700 of the rental single-family homes. How many total single-family homes are there in Richfield? About?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Do you have any, like, ballpark of, like, what percentage short-term rentals would be, or anything like that?
I...
Okay.
I do not.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? All right. So would you like to make the motion then?
Is there need a public comment? Or they have had? I'll try. So I move to approve the recommended action, to approve a first reading of an ordinance restricting short-term rentals to no less than one month unless the rental license holder resides on site.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Now we are open for discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to discuss the matter? Councilmember Haverly?
Just reflecting today on how this first came before us, and it was, I think it was a neighbor, I know one of the first folks was here today and has been very steadfast in this issue, a neighbor of a sing, or a short-term rental who was troubled by quick turnover. And I thought it was interesting, you know, hearing from him and hearing from other folks who live next to short-term rentals. A lot of the violations aren't necessarily the types of things that the owners talked about. It's, it's not always a party noise complaint that, you know, is a quick thing to address. A lot of it can just be the reality of very quick turnover of properties, and I recognize that. So that might mean people using outdoor amenities very intensely in a way that long-term residents don't. It might mean simply having several cars turning over late at night and that being disturbing to neighboring properties. And I'm sympathetic to those, to those arguments. That is a sort of disturbance that we don't contemplate and is very difficult to regulate in other ways. But I also feel like the, the concerns that were brought to us that led us down this path were really limited to the very quick turnover. The one or two-night stays where people are maximizing that fire pit or that hot tub, where people are coming and going at 10:00 PM because they just got home from the airport. And I think that those can be addressed in a much shorter time period as a minimum. And I will make a motion shortly that we consider amending that to one week rather than one month. The reason I think that one week is more appropriate, I think it's still responsive to the concerns that we heard. It's still addressing this very quick turnover. It allows the novelty of the yard to wear off, but it's much more realistic to the way that these are used. I can't think of the last time I took a vacation that was 30 days plus somewhere. If I have a family member, and I do have family members visit from Montana, and I'm not able to have them in my house, I would have to tell them to, to stay in Minneapolis. I can't, I can't do anything to have them in the city that I live in and that I represent. And I think we're only hurting visitors and residents by doing that. I don't think we're protecting residents by going beyond one week. I think that would address, again, the initial concerns that we have, but still keep this open. Regarding the concerns about housing affordability, I, I am sympathetic to that too. However, I think, although we don't have the number handy of the total number of single-family homes, I will say one, one owner has claimed it's half a percent of all of our homes. I don't know if that's accurate, but I do know from our garbage process, I think it was in the neighborhood of 10,000 total homes. So 100 homes, we're talking about, whatever that total number is, is, is pretty small. In addition, were we to go forward with a one-week restriction, some owners will drop off. That is going to be too restrictive for many, and owners who are considering buying an affordable single-family house and turning it into a short-term rental are going to be discouraged because Minneapolis does have a looser regulation, and it would be a, a better city to start your business in. By doing one week, we will likely slightly reduce the number of these homes. We will still provide opportunities for family who are visiting or folks who want to use this, and we won't be completely shutting out the business owners who, who have invested, and I think particularly the ones that have taken the care to reach out are really trying to run a decent business here. I think it's amenity to our residents. I think it addresses the concerns, and I would ask for your support in that amendment. I don't know if there's a desire for general conversation. I think I'll just make the motion for that, and then we can discuss. So I move that we direct staff to change it to a one-week minimum rather than a one-month minimum.
Is there a second for that amendment? Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so now we're discussing the amendment of whether we should go from 30 days to one week. Is there a comment? Councilmember Burke?
Thank you. You know, the staff did a, I think, a great job in doing some research and finding numbers and information, looking at the law. I'm concerned with the idea that Richfield will allow short-term rentals of a week, and that somehow Richfield will somehow ignore the fact that if you make it a week, that those facilities have to be ADA compliant. They have to be accessible to people with disabilities. There also, there's additional enforcement that'll have to be taken upon by the city and contracted, I assume, to, to Bloomington perhaps, or... And it just seems the added cost, the added effort, ensuring that these places are ADA compliant, it just doesn't seem that, that a week is appropriate. I think the 30 days is fine, considering that we have neighboring communities that don't allow them at all. And I know for people who already own properties, that seems quite restrictive. But I think the 30 days would be appropriate. I, I would say, hearing some testimony today, that instead of, you know, perhaps lengthening the time period for when enforcement would, would occur. I know right now it's considered seven months. I don't know if that requires a separate motion, it probably does, but, you know, I would consider lengthening it to a year from enactment to give those property owners a full year in order that they can go about, you know, making changes and making some tough decisions. But... So that's where I stand on this issue.
All right. Other comments on the amendment? Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I, I echo the sentiments of both councilmembers, but I tend to want to agree with councilmember Haverly on this, that I agree when talking with people that, even people that go wintering, like in Arizona or Florida or whatever, to stay a month at a minimum somewhere is, is pretty difficult to do. I think with the one week, that would be acceptable because that would possibly cut down on supposedly whatever you would call party houses type of thing. And it also provides the amenity for families coming in, because hotels are expensive. They're, they're very expensive to stay in if you have a large group of people. And even though they may not be going to restaurants or shopping or whatever, because they have a place to stay and to cook and everything, that, that wouldn't preclude them from trying new places out in the, in the community. And, and also, if you keep it at the one month, you're looking at people who own these homes, and if you have a one-month minimum, they're basically a small business. And if we are interested in keeping small businesses and to support small businesses of any type, you know, this would be one of them. And possibly in the future, there would be, might need more regulations for licensing, for enforcement, if possible, for inspections, and for ADA compliant type of thing, and to give these homeowners a chance to, at a certain point, give them a certain amount of time to adhere to some of these things. I would, I would definitely accept the one-week minimum.
Other comments? Questions?
Yes. I would have to, I am actually in support of councilmember O'Leary's amendment to this motion, or the amendment to support a one, like a one-week stay, or a minimum of five days. I think that this is going to, it's going to help keep, keep, and help us meet these business owners halfway, these homeowners halfway, where we're not completely banning it, and we're not, we, we, I don't think we should accept a status quo or to just keep it the same, because I think there are people that are regulating it more. I think the 3% lodging tax could be something that is going to help benefit our local tax base here and take the burden off of some of our homeowners here. In that way, it doesn't seem like it's so burdensome. But yeah, I, I would agree with councilmember Haverly, also thinking that, that change should take place within, within a reasonable amount of time. I don't think I would agree with 18 months, but within a year.
Great. Thank you. Other further comments? Councilmember Haverly?
I would just say, I really appreciate the council sharing their thoughts and the support I'm hearing for it. I, I do want to recognize councilmember Burke's concern. Of course, I would love to see more accessible housing. I think it's a very valid concern. I don't know that the staff is asserting that they're currently in violation, or if they're simply saying that hotels are held to a higher standard, which is true. But the, the primary reason that doesn't guide me away from, from wanting to allow shorter-term rentals is because it does not, nothing to benefit people with disabilities to take this away. It only removes an option, and frankly, as, as one of the testifiers said, creates more competition for hotel rooms, ever so slightly, given how small the number we're talking about. I certainly encourage short-term rental owners, whenever possible, to do everything they can to make their properties accessible. And certainly, if there are violations of the law, they would, they would be responsible for that if they are found to be discriminating against people with disabilities. But for me, preserving the small option is very important. I think one week addresses the concerns. It doesn't cause this to be an explosive issue that's going to take over the city. And then just one clarifying comment. It was my intent to have seven days be the minimum. Councilmember Coleman, you did say five days. Are you comfortable with seven, or were you advocating for five?
I would be comfortable with five.
Okay. Are you not comfortable with seven?
Oh, no, I just...
Either way, okay. Sounds good. But just to clarify, my intent of motion was seven days. Okay.
All right. So I also, I want to clarify something that was said earlier about the nature of the complaints. I did hear from people that where there were egregious party houses, and two families have moved out of Richfield because of the party houses next door to them, and where people were doing things like urinating and vomiting in public and on their neighbors' yards and things like that. So to, I think it's fair to say that there were some egregious party houses. It wasn't just people using things in a way. So I think that we do need to take this seriously. My second thing is that, from what I've heard from a lot of the owners of short-term rentals, is that they were saying that if you do a week, you might as well do 30 days for some of them, but I've heard other people that now tonight said the opposite. So I think there's different opinions on that. I would tend to go with the 30-day as the preferred option, but I, I do think either way, we need to deal with the party houses and make sure that we are not forcing people to, you know, residents to be disturbed all of the time, because it's a resi, zoned residential, it's not a commercial district, so you're not expecting to have your piece disturbed all the time. So is there any further discussion, or we're going to vote on just the amendment? So the amendment before us is to change it to a one-week instead of 30 days. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So we have three people in, in favor and two against. That means the motion passes. So now the main motion that is on the floor is that would be restricting the short-term levels to, rentals to no less than one week instead of one month, unless the rental license holder resides on site. So is there any further discussion or questions on that?
Councilmember Haverly?
I will just say, it, it thankfully hasn't been an area of dispute, but I, I am glad, and I would have been glad even had we wanted to do the longer restriction, with the exception for the single-family or the owner that lives on site. We're trying to get more duplexes, more EDUs in Richfield, and I think that is an option. And given that those short-term stays can be the, those very short-term, less-than-a-week stays can be the most problematic, having that added level of supervision, having the neighbor that somebody knows can go talk to, I think is very important. And I'm grateful that both staff and council have generally supported that exception when the owner is on site. There were comments earlier, and I would certainly welcome anybody else to make an amendment on the effective date. I was planning on making that amendment had the previous one not passed, but I do not feel as strongly, given that we would still be keeping a lot of these still available. But if another councilmember wanted to extend that to like a year from today, or like June 1st, 2026, I would certainly support that, but I don't feel strongly enough to make the motion.
Community Development Director Palman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. In terms of an effective date, the way that we rent, issue rental licenses, which short-term rentals are required to have, is that those are issued annually. We do not prorate those licenses. So while you could certainly make the effective date of this, you know, May 27th, when the second reading of 2026, we will not prorate those license fees, and folks will be required to get a full-year rental license at the beginning of the year, even if they will decide only to operate until the middle of next year, so...
Could you clarify, clarify how much money that is, or...
I'm sorry, I do not know. I could look it up while you're discussing, but I don't know off the top of my head what a rental license costs.
Like, if it's thousands and thousands of dollars, that's, that's a big deal for me. If it's some relatively minor fee, I'm less worried personally. Okay, so at least two, two owners say that it is between 100 and 200. So does anybody want to extend it, or are we comfortable with this being effective January 1st of next year?
Councilmember Coleman Woods?
Sorry, that was a long, long, and I would say that's... I would have to say that January 1st of '26 would be my...
I am fine with that, and I think also the fact that some people are dealing with difficult houses. I recognize the burden on the, on the business owners, but this also provides sooner relief to those who are troubled by these very short turnovers.
Director Palman?
Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor, several councilmembers. You could also amend the effective date next time. We could bring you more information on what the rental license fee is and how that would actually work in practice for us. A one-week minimum is going to be difficult for us to enforce anyway. If we were also then trying to revoke licenses mid-year, that might be tough, but let me talk to the rental licensing staff and bring additional information to the second reading.
Okay, that makes sense. I had another request. It was troubling to me when I was listening to the testimony, what it made it sound like people thought we didn't have a lodging tax, because we do have a lodging tax, and while there's an honor system to pay it, it is something that should be, have been paid all along. And I'm wondering if there's something we need to do to publicize that more, or how we can enforce that more.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So yes, we've had a lodging tax for a long time, and our three hotels have paid it monthly for years. We recently started... We recently started to get some short-term rentals. We currently have three that remit checks regularly. We can do our best to contact them and let them know that they need to be paying this, but as we stated at the work sessions, it's, it's, it is going to be tough to enforce this and the one week. There's just not a lot of information, so you don't get addresses when you go to the software platforms.
You know, I think that that's tough to, to talk about, because I've had a number of my local neighbors get letters about their dog licenses, and it has become a point of contention between my neighbors and I. If we can figure out who's got a dog, I think we can figure out who's renting out their properties. I think that that's worth, worth it, to spend our efforts in collecting a larger tax amount than maybe a $40 dog license. But it's, I would, I would agree that this is probably the, the length of time before we implement a, what do you call it, a limit on the, or the, the license in, enforcing that. I think that if it's going to take more time, because staff needs more time to, to make it happen, I think that's reasonable. I think that's within reason to like, extend it out if we aren't able to, to do those permits quick enough, or update the website, for instance.
I would agree that it's troubling that we have not been having people, people haven't been paying this. I mean, there've been more than three people commenting, and you're saying only three people have been submitting that. So I think that needs to be part of the information process if we end up, you know, voting for this ordinance change, or even if we don't. We need to let people know what the deal is. So, Councilmember Burke?
And so that, I'll, I'll just go back to the concern I've already expressed, but it seems like it's even more salient, is that you would think enforcing money is pretty straightforward, but it's even more difficult to enforce ADA compliance. And that's the law. It's required. And the fact that it's not going to be enforced, that's a real concern. And, you know, Mayor's already expressed concerns about party houses and so on. That's also a concern. But shortening it to a week brings on a whole host of state and federal laws, because these are going to be considered, you know, hotels or motels by definition. And what I'm hearing from staff is that it's going to be quite a challenge to check on 100 units, to make sure that taxes are being paid, that they're ADA compliant, that they're, all fire standards are being met. It's great to see that the responsible people are here. That's really great. But then who's going to make sure that everyone else is playing by the same rules?
And also, just a procedural question. We will be having a second reading, so people can send information to the council and make comments now, because we're not having a public hearing at this time. But just if there's information that you want to get to us, that's the purpose of having a second reading, so we can air what the issues are, and if there's things that people need to talk about, they can. Director Palman, I believe you wanted to add something?
Thank you, Mayor Seppel. And to address some of your comments, Councilmember Burke, if we, if the council goes ahead and adopts a one-week minimum, I just want to be clear, we will not, we will not be attempting to enforce ADA requirements on, on these units. There isn't, there isn't a mechanism in place to do that. ADA requirements kick in when you make improvements to the house, or, I'm sorry, make improvements to a business. There, there just is not the infrastructure at the state level, at the city level. No one's doing those inspections in, in any community that I'm aware of, so I just want to be clear. We will not be changing our inspection procedures to look for that, because we can't.
So again, could we just publicize the importance that those things need to be considered, and as well as the lodging tax? And we've got an audience here, and hopefully the network will, that information will get out to people?
Yes, we will certainly look at ways to publish the tourism tax information more broadly and, and work with finance on that. And then, you know, we can, we can do our best to encourage everyone to make accessibility improvements, but I don't know that we have a direct route to, to encourage these folks. Yes.
I have a procedural question about just rental licenses in general. Do the, do they have to pass fire safety inspections for any type of rental license?
A rental license does check for things like smoke detectors and things like that, but it isn't, it isn't a fire inspection like you would get at a hotel or a motel. They're not looking for exiting and exit signs and things that you're going to require in a commercial business, things that you generally require in a lodging facility, because people are not familiar with the facility. So you want to make sure they know how to exit. Those types of things are not looked for in a, in a rental, a rental inspection. The assumption is that people live there and they know how to exit.
I have another procedural question. Is it, I guess this would be for some of our owners in the room. Is it, does it give you a five-star rating if you have ADA compliance, or if you are better equipped to host more people? Or does it, is it, does it look better for you if you, you have smoke detectors and fire detection systems? Does Verbo or Airbnb require that you have some of this stuff in, in place?
So we, we can't have people answer it directly, but if you could submit that information to the council?
That'd be great.
That would be awesome, so we have that before the second reading. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I guess I would just ask for the second reading. If staff can clarify, my read on your report is that you were comparing the requirements that apply to hotels versus the requirements that apply to short-term rentals and long-term rentals. Not that you were asserting that these things are required of short-term rentals. So I guess it would be helpful for the next meeting just to understand to what extent they should be following the ADA, and to what extent the city has a legal obligation to ensure that any license holder is doing that.
Can you repeat that question?
Sure. I want clarification. Do they, are they in violation currently by not being ADA compliant, or are they simply exempt from this rules because of the nature of it? And if they are in violation, is the city legally obligated to that, or is that a matter between a potential person who, who was denied access and the owner?
Thank you. Other, other comments, questions, clarifications?
I'm wondering if we can publicize how, how rigid we'd like to be on their, if you are to obtain a short-term rental license, that you make sure you're ADA compliant and so that we're not having to regulate it, or have to enforce it. Just, you know, some rigid language in our city code that sounds like tough, if there's any of that available, for when people do purchase properties and then all of a sudden want to turn it into an Airbnb. Here's the rules and regulations. Just as an example, Daytona Beach has this very code in their, like a, they're associated, like a, what is it, HOA for manufactured homes in that area, that you have to be 55 and older, and you have to be, you cannot Airbnb the, the, like manufactured home out. So they don't allow it in their HOAs, technically. I don't want to be an HOA, but maybe that's some language that we can include.
Okay, we'll go to Director Palman to respond, and then I believe Councilmember Hayford O'Leary also wants to add something.
Thank you. I, I believe what I'm hearing, Councilmember Coleman Woods, is that you're asking us to establish a more robust program to regulate short-term rentals. You know, my department does not have the capacity to do that. I can certainly discuss it with other departments, but we do not have the capacity to train our rental inspectors in accessibility and then enforce that requirement on short-term rentals. I don't know that we could, you know, we'd have to talk it over with a city attorney teaching if we would legally be able to do that, but we do not have the capacity for that.
But if you write the tougher language, maybe it wouldn't be so tough. I don't know, just asking.
Well, we would be the enforcement arm of that, and we, we do, we do not have the capacity to enforce that.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions before we go on to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary? All right. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I just wanted to share, I am very frustrated hearing several owners suggesting we come up with a lodging tax when there is already one that apparently some of them in this room are not paying. That said, I, I do want us to like, see the forest for the trees here again. Currently, this is about 100 properties. It will probably be even less with this restriction in place. These owners should be on notice that if they're violating the rules, they may be enforced. But I also want us to set realistic expectations of staff, that I think they have many things to deal with, and we can't ask them to like, hunt down all of these details and spend a ton of time on this. In fact, I, I would suspect part of the basis of the recommendation for nearly a total ban was just the administrative simplicity of it. We are asking a bit more of them by keeping more of these in the community. I think that's worth doing. And I think it would be reasonable to ask for educational things to be included, but I don't want us to set the expectation that we're going to be able to enforce so much better, because we just, we just don't have people to do it.
All right. So the motion before us is to approve a first reading of an ordinance restricting short-term rentals to no less than one week unless the rental license holder resides on site. And is there any further discussion on that? So a yes vote would be to restrict this, and a no vote would be to continue our current policy. Is that correct? Am I understanding that right? City Attorney Techen? All right. So is everybody clear on what they're voting on?
No, one more time.
Okay. So right now, this would be an ordinance change to restrict it to no less than one week. So if you vote yes, you want to restrict it to no less than one week. If you vote no, we don't change the ordinance and the current rules stand the way they are, where there's no restriction on time. So, so does everybody understand what the vote is at this point? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We have passed the first reading, and to restrict the short-term rentals to no less than one week unless the rental license holder resides on site. Thank you to everybody that testified and for all of the community input. We will have a second reading at our next meeting, and so there is still opportunity if people want to weigh in on the, on the matter or give more information. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And claims and payroll?
Motion to approve claims and payroll?
Seconded.
Spend moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we've approved the claims and payroll. Next, we'll go to hats off to hometown hits, and we'll start with Councilmember Coleman Woods.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. I am, I'd like to give a hats off to hometown hits to our local Richfield High School baseball team, because they're in a 100-inning tournament fundraiser, and it's been ongoing since Saturday morning, and they, I hope they're done by tonight, but that was continued on until today. They've raised over $15,000 for the Richfield High School baseball program. For those that don't know, the, our sports programs only get about $1,500 per program to operate. So all of our high school fundraisers are for good reason. $1,500 doesn't go very far in a baseball program, so. Thank you to everyone who's supported the program. I have about 10 family members who, who got letters from my son, who graciously were able to support in any way, shape, or form. So thank you to all those who have supported the kids around here.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, on behalf of the Arts Commission and the local community center that's hosting this coming up this Thursday, is the annual senior high school, Richfield Senior High School Art Exhibit. And the art, I believe the art is up right now at this community center, and they will have a open house type of thing, if you want to call it that, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. on this Thursday.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I was just going to say a hats off on our concrete project. We, in our last budget, allocated more money for ADA upgrades to our sidewalks, and a particularly frustrating me, even, thing to me, even though I'm not a wheelchair user, was the 73rd Street crossing of the railroad. And that is now much improved, it is much more usable, and it can finally be used by a wheelchair. So it's just great to see those little accessibility improvements happening, and I'm glad for both council and staff for supporting that and putting money towards it.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I wanted to do a hats off to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, who is now part, our District 5 representative to the Met Council Regional Land Use Advisory Committee. So thank you for taking that on and for doing that. I also wanted to do a hats off to one of our residents, Monica Byron, who has been a teacher in Richfield, I believe, for 24 years, was recently elected to be the president of Education Minnesota, the State Teachers Union, and she'll start her duties on July 1st. She's currently the vice president. So hats off to Monica Byron. So we're very proud of one of Richfield's own for being elected to the president, presidency of Education Minnesota. And then my last hats off is just prompted by today, watching the Public Works people marking all the lines, because I know there have been, there's been a big project going in across the city where, I think it's US Internet is going into the right-of-way. And so it was amazing watching the workers marking all the lines so that can be done safely. And I know as they're moving across the city, that creates a lot of work for the city staff to do that, and I appreciate the fact that they're marking everything. So with that, if there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Spend moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.
Awesome. Better. Good.